Welcome to my AP United States Government and Politics Review video for Unit Three. This video will review the full unit in about fifty minutes. Let's dive in. Unit three of AP United States Government and Politics is titled Civil Liberties and Civil Rights. In this unit, we'll explore how our rights and freedoms are protected, including how the Bill of Rights and other constitutional amendments protect our rights, and how social movements have led to greater legal protections for both individuals and minority groups. In this first lesson, we will explore how the Bill of Rights protects people's freedoms and limits government power. First, we will look at the purpose of the Bill of Rights and why it was added to the Constitution. Then we'll go through each of the ten amendments in the Bill of Rights, and then we'll explore the role of the courts in interpreting these rights over time. Let's start with the purpose of the Bill of Rights, which helps us understand why these ten amendments were created in the first place. After the Constitution was written, many people worried that it gave too much power to the national government and didn't clearly protect individual freedoms. To fix this, the first ten amendments known as the Bill of Rights were added in seventeen ninety-one. These amendments were meant to guarantee personal freedoms, called civil liberties, and limit the government's ability to interfere with the lives of citizens. Now let's go through the ten amendments in the Bill of Rights. Each one protects specific freedoms or limits what the government can do. Okay, let's pause there for a second. You might be realizing already that there are going to be a lot of ideas and concepts you're going to need to remember. That's why I've made the Four Hour Exam Ready Playbook, a study and review guide that you can complete while watching the video. Grab it through the link in the description and practice what you're learning while watching. All in just four hours. With this guide, it's never too late to prepare for the exam. Now, let's get back to the lesson. The First Amendment protects the right to free speech, freedom of religion, freedom of the press, the right to assemble peacefully, and the right to petition the government for changes. The Second Amendment protects the right of individuals to keep and bear arms. The Third Amendment states that the government may not force people to quarter soldiers in their homes during peacetime without their consent. The Fourth Amendment protects people from unreasonable searches and seizures by requiring a warrant supported by probable cause. The Fifth Amendment guarantees that no person shall be forced to testify against themselves, be tried twice for the same crime, or be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The Sixth Amendment ensures the right to a speedy and public trial by an impartial jury, the right to be informed of the charges, to confront witnesses, to obtain witnesses in one's favor, and to have legal counsel. The Seventh Amendment provides the right to a jury trial in civil cases involving disputes over property or money above a certain amount. The Eighth Amendment prohibits excessive bail and fines as well as cruel and unusual punishment. The Ninth Amendment affirms that the people have rights beyond those specifically listed in the Constitution. The Tenth Amendment states that any powers not given to the federal government by the Constitution are reserved to the states or to the people. You might remember in Unit One, our discussion of the concepts of enumerated and reserved powers, which explained how some powers belong to the federal government while others belong to the states. The Tenth Amendment is the part of the Constitution that clarifies these concepts. Now let's move on to the role of the courts, which helps us see how these rights are protected over time. If someone believes their civil liberties guaranteed under the Bill of Rights are being violated, they can bring their case to the courts. Judges, especially those on the Supreme Court, decide how the Bill of Rights applies in real life. For example, in Tinker versus Des Moines in nineteen sixty-nine, the court ruled that students wearing black armbands to protest the Vietnam War were protected by the First Amendment's right to free speech. In Texas versus Johnson in nineteen eighty-nine, the court decided that burning the American flag is a form of free expression protected by the Bill of Rights, even if many people find it offensive. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on the Bill of Rights and how it protects civil liberties. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and FRQ Mastery Playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. This free response practice task is a Supreme Court comparison. These ones are tough, so I recommend watching the Required Supreme Court Cases video on this channel to help learn how to answer this type of exam question. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Two. In this lesson, we will explore how the First Amendment protects religious freedom in the United States. First, we will look at the First Amendment itself and the two parts that deal with religion. Then, we will explore how courts have interpreted these clauses, including examples of important legal decisions. Let's start with the First Amendment, which helps us understand how the Constitution protects religious freedom in two different ways. The First Amendment says that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. These two parts are known as the Establishment Clause and the Free Exercise Clause. The Establishment Clause means that the government is not allowed to create an official religion or show preference for one religion over another. This clause is about keeping religion and government separate. It helps prevent the government from sponsoring or supporting religious activities, such as leading prayers in public schools or funding religious institutions with taxpayer money. The Free Exercise Clause means that people are allowed to follow and practice their religion freely. This clause protects individuals from government interference in their personal religious beliefs and practices as long as those practices do not break general laws or harm others. It gives people the right to worship how they want, wear religious clothing, attend services, and express their faith. Okay, let's move on to how courts have interpreted these parts of the First Amendment. We'll look at two key court cases that help us understand how the religious freedom clauses have been applied: Engel versus Vitale and Wisconsin versus Yoder. In Engel versus Vitale, the Supreme Court ruled that public schools cannot lead students in prayer, even if the prayer is voluntary and non-denominational. This decision enforced the Establishment Clause by saying that school-sponsored prayer counts as government promotion of religion. In Wisconsin versus Yoder, the court ruled that Amish families could not be forced to send their children to school past the eighth grade since it interfered with their religious beliefs. This decision protected the Free Exercise Clause by recognizing the importance of religious freedom, even when it went against state education laws. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the First Amendment protects freedom of religion. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Three. In our last lesson, we looked at how the First Amendment protects freedom of religion. Now, we're shifting to a different part of the First Amendment: the protection of speech. First, we will look at the different kinds of speech that are protected under the Constitution. Then, we will look at how the government can sometimes place limits on speech when there's a need to protect public safety or order. Let's start with the kinds of speech that are protected under the First Amendment. The Constitution protects many forms of expression, not just spoken or written words. These protections help people share opinions, criticize the government, protest peacefully, and express personal beliefs. There are two major types of protected speech: verbal speech and symbolic speech. Verbal speech refers to words that are spoken or written. This is the most familiar kind of speech protection. It includes public speeches, conversations, social media posts, newspaper articles, songs, and more. The government is not allowed to punish people just because it disagrees with what they say, even if the message is unpopular or critical of those in power. Symbolic speech is nonverbal action that communicates a message. This might include things like wearing an armband to protest a war, burning a flag as a political statement, or kneeling during the National Anthem. For example, earlier in this unit, we looked at the case of Tinker versus Des Moines, where the Supreme Court ruled that students wearing black armbands to protest the Vietnam War was a form of protected speech because it clearly communicated a political idea, even though no words were spoken. Okay, let's move on to how the government can sometimes place limits on speech. Even though free speech is strongly protected, there are certain situations where the government is allowed to step in. Courts try to balance individual freedom with the need for public safety, peace, and order. This means that some types of speech can be restricted if they cause serious problems for others or disrupt society. There are four main categories of speech that can be limited: time, place, and manner restrictions, obscene and offensive speech, defamation, and speech that creates a clear and present danger. Let's begin with time, place, and manner restrictions. This means that the government can set rules about when, where, and how speech takes place as long as those rules are fair and don't depend on the speaker's message. For example, a city might not allow a protest to happen at midnight in a residential neighborhood, or it might require a permit for a march downtown. These rules are meant to protect public order, not to silence ideas. Next is obscene and offensive speech. While it's hard to define exactly what counts as obscene, the court has said that speech is not protected if it has no serious value and is highly offensive based on community standards. For example, the government can ban vulgar messages from being shown where children are present. These limits are controversial, but they're based on the idea that some content crosses a line that society has agreed not to allow. The third category is defamation, which means saying things that damage another person's reputation in a false and harmful way. There are two types of defamation: libel, which is written, and slander, which is spoken. The First Amendment does not protect people who lie about others in a way that causes serious harm. For example, if someone falsely accuses another person of committing a crime in a news article or on social media, that could be considered defamation, and it could lead to a lawsuit. Finally, there is speech that creates a clear and present danger. This means that if what someone says is likely to cause immediate harm, like inciting violence or encouraging people to break the law, it can be restricted. A famous example is shouting "fire" in a crowded theater when there is no fire, which could cause panic and injuries. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the First Amendment protects freedom of speech. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and Free Response Questions Mastery Playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Four. In our last lesson, we looked at freedom of speech and how the government can protect or limit it in different situations. Now we'll turn to another key freedom: freedom of the press. First, we will look at what freedom of the press is and why it's important in a democracy. Then we will explore the idea of prior restraint and how the Supreme Court has interpreted it in major cases. Let's start by defining freedom of the press. Freedom of the press is the right of news organizations to share information and opinions with the public without interference from the government. This includes newspapers, news websites, television news, and more. The founders believed that a free press was essential for holding government officials accountable and keeping people informed about important issues. That's why they included it in the First Amendment. Okay, let's move on to prior restraint and how the courts have handled it. Prior restraint is when the government tries to prevent the press from publishing something before it comes out. For example, a reporter might have found out about an upcoming covert military action and want to report on it. The government might try to prevent the reporter from publishing this information because it could place members of the United States military at risk. The courts have said that prior restraint is very dangerous because it gives the government power to control the flow of information and silence criticism. That's why there's a heavy presumption against it, meaning that the courts almost always assume it is unconstitutional, unless there's an extremely serious reason. There are two major court cases that show how the Supreme Court thinks about prior restraint: NEAR versus Minnesota and New York Times versus United States. Let's begin with NEAR versus Minnesota. In this case, a state tried to shut down a newspaper that published stories accusing local officials of corruption. The Supreme Court said that the government could not ban future issues of the paper because it was a violation of the First Amendment's right to freedom of the press. The second case is New York Times versus United States, often called the Pentagon Papers case. In this case, the government tried to stop the New York Times and the Washington Post from publishing secret documents about the Vietnam War. The government said that the documents would harm national security, but the Supreme Court ruled that the newspapers had the right to publish the papers. The court explained that the risk to national security was not strong enough to justify prior restraint. New York Times versus United States is a required Supreme Court case, so your knowledge of this case could be tested on the exam. Watch my Required Supreme Court Cases video on this channel for a deeper dive into this case and all the other required cases. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the First Amendment protects freedom of the press. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Five. In this lesson, we will explore how the Second Amendment protects the right to bear arms and how the Supreme Court has interpreted that right over time. First, we will look at what the Second Amendment says and why it was included in the Constitution. Then we will examine two different interpretations of what the right to bear arms means. Finally, we will explore two major Supreme Court cases that clarified how the Second Amendment applies today. Let's start with the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment says, "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." This means that people have a right to own and use weapons, especially firearms. But the wording of the amendment, especially the part about a "well-regulated militia", has caused a lot of disagreement. There are two main ways people interpret the Second Amendment: the individual right view and the collective right view. The individual right view says that every person has a personal right to own guns for things like self-defense, hunting, or sport. This interpretation treats the Second Amendment like the other parts of the Bill of Rights. It protects individuals, not just groups. People who support this view believe that the right to bear arms doesn't depend on being part of a militia. The collective right view says that the Second Amendment only protects gun ownership as part of a state-run military force, like a militia. Supporters of this interpretation believe that the founders were mainly worried about making sure states had the power to defend themselves, not about personal gun rights. Now let's look at how the Supreme Court has ruled on these ideas. There are two major cases that help define what the Second Amendment means: District of Columbia versus Heller and McDonald versus Chicago. In District of Columbia versus Heller, the Supreme Court ruled that the Second Amendment protects an individual's right to own a firearm, even if they are not part of a militia. The case challenged a Washington DC law that banned handguns and required that all other guns be kept unloaded and locked up. The court struck down the law, saying it violated the Constitution. This was the first time the Supreme Court clearly said the Second Amendment gives individuals, not just groups, a right to bear arms. In McDonald versus Chicago, the court took this idea one step further. This case challenged a handgun ban in the city of Chicago. The court ruled that the Second Amendment doesn't just limit the federal government, it also applies to state and local governments. This decision was important because it meant that states could not pass laws that totally ban individuals from owning guns. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the Second Amendment protects the right to bear arms and how the Supreme Court has interpreted that right. If you're following along with the study guide, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Six. In this lesson, we will explore how certain constitutional amendments are interpreted by the courts to balance individual freedoms with the need for public order and safety. First, we will look at how the Eighth Amendment has been applied to questions of cruel and unusual punishment. Then we'll explore how the Second Amendment raises questions about balancing gun rights and public safety. And finally, we'll examine how the Fourth Amendment is interpreted in modern cases about privacy and surveillance. Let's start with the Eighth Amendment, which states that the government shall not inflict cruel and unusual punishment. But what counts as cruel and unusual is something courts have to decide over time. Two major issues often come up: how the Eighth Amendment is interpreted and how that interpretation affects laws about the death penalty. Over time, the Supreme Court has reinterpreted the term "cruel and unusual" to be consistent with social values. For example, punishments that were once common, like public whippings, are now viewed as cruel. The key point we need to remember here is that the court's understanding of cruel and unusual changes as society's values change. When it comes to the death penalty, the Supreme Court has ruled that it is not automatically considered cruel and unusual. However, the court has placed limits. For example, the death penalty cannot be given to people with intellectual disabilities. It also cannot be used on people who committed their crimes before turning eighteen. The court has also ruled that certain methods of execution that cause extreme pain may violate the Eighth Amendment. These decisions show how the court also continues to interpret and refine the meaning of cruel and unusual punishment, specifically in relation to the death penalty. Okay, let's move on to the Second Amendment and how it connects to this debate about safety and rights. As we discussed in the last lesson, the Second Amendment protects an individual's right to own firearms. But for this lesson, we're focusing on what happens when that right runs into concerns about public safety. Lawmakers and courts have to ask, "How much can the government regulate guns in order to prevent violence without taking away people's basic rights?" The courts have allowed some regulations, like background checks or bans on certain types of weapons, but they've also struck down laws that they believe went too far. This debate is a good example of how hard it is to balance freedom with safety. Now let's turn to the Fourth Amendment and how it relates to privacy in the digital age. The Fourth Amendment says people have the right to be safe from unreasonable searches and seizures. Traditionally, this meant that police needed a warrant to search your home or take your property. But today, new technology has raised new questions about how this right works. We'll explore two big areas where this amendment gets tested today: digital privacy and metadata and law enforcement surveillance. Let's start with digital privacy and metadata. Metadata is the background information about your digital communications, like who you messaged, when, and for how long. Government agencies have sometimes collected this kind of data in large amounts to track possible threats. They say this helps keep the public safe. But critics argue that even though the actual messages aren't being read, collecting this information still invades people's privacy. In the case Carpenter versus United States, the Supreme Court said the government usually needs a warrant to get location data from your cellphone. That decision shows how courts are updating the Fourth Amendment to protect privacy in the digital world. Now let's look at law enforcement and surveillance. Police today can use tools like drones, security cameras, and even facial recognition to monitor people. Some of this is helpful for preventing crime, but it also creates concerns about whether the government is watching too much, especially without permission. Courts now ask whether someone had a reasonable expectation of privacy in the place being watched. If you're walking in a public park, the court might say you can't expect full privacy. But if the police fly a drone over your backyard to look inside your house without a warrant, that could be seen as going too far. Again, the courts are trying to strike the right balance between keeping people safe and protecting personal freedom. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the courts interpret amendments to balance individual freedom with public order and safety. On the screen now are all the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response practice questions, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Seven. In this lesson, we will explore the concept of selective incorporation, a concept that is highly likely to appear in the AP exam. First, we will look at what selective incorporation means. Then we'll examine how it connects to the Fourteenth Amendment. Finally, we'll explore how it has impacted what the states can and cannot do. Let's start with defining and explaining selective incorporation. Selective incorporation is a legal doctrine that allows parts of the Bill of Rights to apply to state governments, not just the federal government. When the Constitution was first written, the Bill of Rights only protected people from actions by the national government. That meant state governments could sometimes pass laws that violated rights, like freedom of speech or the right to a lawyer. Over time, the Supreme Court used the idea of selective incorporation to stop this. It chose certain rights from the Bill of Rights and applied them to the states. The mechanism that the Supreme Court used was the Fourteenth Amendment. The Fourteenth Amendment was added to the Constitution after the Civil War, and it says that "no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." This part is called the Due Process Clause. Over time, the Supreme Court said that the word "liberty" in the Due Process Clause refers to many of the rights listed in the Bill of Rights, like freedom of religion, the right to a fair trial, and protection from cruel punishment. This applies to nearly every right, but a small few have not been incorporated, or at least not yet. For example, the right against quartering soldiers in homes, which is in the Third Amendment, has not been formally incorporated by the Supreme Court, meaning states have not yet been forced to comply with this part of the Bill of Rights. So, in summary, the word "liberty" in the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment enables the court to force states to comply to many parts of the Bill of Rights, even though it originally only applied to the federal government. Now let's look at how selective incorporation has impacted the states. We'll break this down into two parts: limits on state laws and key Supreme Court cases. First are the limits on state laws. Selective incorporation means that state governments can no longer pass laws that violate the rights that have been incorporated. For example, states cannot pass laws that completely ban political protests or deny criminal defendants the right to a lawyer. People can now challenge state and local governments in court if their civil liberties protected in the Bill of Rights are violated. Next, let's look at two key cases that helped establish selective incorporation. We'll look at Gideon versus Wainwright and McDonald versus Chicago. In Gideon versus Wainwright, the court ruled that states must provide a lawyer to people accused of crimes who cannot afford one. This applied the Sixth Amendment right to counsel to the states. In McDonald versus Chicago, the court ruled that the Second Amendment right to bear arms also applies to the states. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on selective incorporation and how the Supreme Court has used the Fourteenth Amendment to protect civil liberties from state interference. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and Free Response Mastery Playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into Topic Three Point Eight. In this lesson, we will explore how the Constitution protects people accused of crimes. Those who are accused of crimes are allowed due process, which means the government must follow fair legal procedures before issuing judgment or punishment. First, we'll look at what due process means in the Constitution and how it applies to both the national and state governments. Then we'll explore the rules the government has to follow when accusing someone of a crime. After that, we'll go over the specific protections people have when they're put on trial. Finally, we'll see what happens when law enforcement breaks the rules and collects evidence illegally. Let's start with what due process means and where it comes from. Due process is first established in the Fifth Amendment. The Fifth Amendment says the federal government can't take away someone's life, liberty, or property without going through fair legal steps. Due process is further reinforced by the Fourteenth Amendment. As we saw in the previous lesson, the Fourteenth Amendment extends protection of due process and equal protection to state governments. There is an important exception to these due process rights. If there is a clear and present danger to public safety, law enforcement may be allowed to temporarily restrict people's liberty without due process. Let's use an example we've previously looked at in this course: freedom of speech. Freedom of speech is a protected right, but if someone says something that could cause serious harm, like shouting a false alarm in a crowded place, the government can step in. In situations like this, courts allow some limits on rights in order to protect the safety and well-being of the public. Okay, now let's look at how the government must act when accusing someone of a crime. We'll cover three ideas here: what procedural due process means, the Miranda Rule, and the exception for public safety. First, procedural due process. This means that the government can't act randomly or unfairly when making decisions about someone's legal rights. It includes things like giving people notice if they are being charged of a crime, allowing them to defend themselves in court, and having rules that are clear and consistent across all court cases. Next is the Miranda Rule, which comes from the nineteen sixty-six Supreme Court case called Miranda versus Arizona. In this case, a man accused of a crime was not notified of his right to remain silent and right to have a lawyer prior to signing a confession. The Supreme Court ruled that this was unconstitutional and that police must tell people about their rights before questioning them while they are in custody. However, there's the public safety exception. If police believe there is an immediate threat to public safety, they are allowed to question someone without reading them their rights first. For example, if they need to ask about the location of a weapon during an emergency, the person's answers can still be used in court. Now let's go over the protections people have when they're put on trial. We'll focus on the right to a lawyer, the right to a speedy and public trial, and the right to an impartial jury. First, the right to legal counsel. The Constitution guarantees that people accused of crimes have the right to a lawyer, even if they can't afford one. Next is the right to a speedy and public trial. This means that the government can't keep someone in jail for a long time without giving them a trial. It also means that the trial must be open to the public, which helps make sure that it's fair and not hidden from view. Finally, the right to an impartial jury. An impartial jury is a group of people who haven't made up their minds before hearing the facts of the case. This helps prevent unfair outcomes and ensures that the decision is based only on the evidence presented in court. Finally, let's talk about the exclusionary rule, which explains what happens when the police break the rules. This rule says that if police collect evidence by violating someone's constitutional rights, like searching without a warrant or failing to inform them that they are allowed to remain silent, that evidence can't be used in court. The rule exists to stop the government from benefiting when it breaks the law. By throwing out illegally obtained evidence, the court sends a message that law enforcement must respect By throwing out illegally obtained evidence, the court sends a message that law enforcement must respect people's rights. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on due process and the rights of the accused. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response practice questions, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into topic three point nine. In this lesson, we will explore how the Constitution protects individual rights that aren't directly written into it, especially the right to privacy. First, we will look at the idea of unenumerated rights, which are rights that aren't listed word for word in the Constitution. Then we'll examine the idea of substantive due process and how it helps the Supreme Court decide on unenumerated rights. After that, we'll walk through three major Supreme Court cases that shaped how privacy is viewed under the Constitution. Let's start with unenumerated rights. Basically, we can split rights into two categories: enumerated and unenumerated. Enumerated rights are the ones that are clearly written down in the Constitution. For example, the right to bear arms is clearly written down in the Second Amendment. Unenumerated rights are rights that are not actually written down in the Constitution, but are still considered by the courts to be protected. These are sometimes called implied rights because it seems like the founders expected these rights to exist based on what they wrote. Next, let's talk about arguments supporting them. Some people argue that certain rights must exist in order for the listed rights to make sense. For example, because the Constitution protects people from unreasonable searches and seizures, many believe this implies a broader right to privacy. So while the right to privacy isn't exactly written in the Constitution, it seems to be implied by other rights. The Ninth Amendment from the Bill of Rights seems to support this idea. Here's the full wording of this amendment. "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." In other words, the Ninth Amendment says that just because a right isn't listed in the Constitution doesn't mean people don't have it. Okay, let's move on to substantive due process. We looked in the last lesson at procedural due process, which was about the importance of the government giving people a fair trial before taking away their rights. Substantive due process goes one step further. It is the idea that the government should not be allowed to take away certain rights because they're too personal for the government to get involved. So while procedural due process says some rights can be taken away as long as the law is followed, substantive due process says other rights are so personal that governments should not get involved at all unless there's a very compelling reason. Courts use this idea to decide whether a law unfairly limits someone's personal and private choices. The constitutional basis of substantive due process comes from the due process clauses found in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. These amendments state that the federal and state governments shall not take away life, liberty, or property. The Supreme Court has interpreted these amendments to protect certain fundamental rights, in particular personal privacy, against government interference. For example, courts have ruled that the government cannot pass a law that prevents adults from choosing to get married or start a family because those are fundamental personal rights protected under the idea of liberty in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments' due process clauses. Okay, let's move on to privacy and court cases, which shows us how the Supreme Court has defined and redefined the right to privacy over time. We'll look at three major cases: Griswold versus Connecticut, Roe versus Wade, and Dobbs versus Jackson. Let's start with Griswold versus Connecticut, which was decided in nineteen sixty-five. In this case, the Supreme Court struck down a law that banned married couples from using birth control. The court said that the Constitution protects a "zone of privacy," especially in decisions about marriage and family. This case was the first to clearly say that the right to privacy exists, even though it's not written in the Constitution. Next is Roe versus Wade, which took place in nineteen seventy-three. This case built on Griswold and extended the right to privacy to include a woman's choice to have an abortion. The court said that the decision to end a pregnancy was a private one, protected by substantive due process, meaning that this choice is so fundamentally personal that the government cannot take it away. This made abortion legal across the country, though with some limits. Finally, we have Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization, a case that took place in twenty twenty-two. In this case, the court overturned Roe versus Wade. The majority rejected the use of substantive due process to protect abortion rights, saying that the Constitution does not clearly protect this right. They ruled instead that decisions about abortion laws should be left up to state legislatures. The decision was highly controversial because it broke from the principle of stare decisis, meaning the court chose to overturn its own earlier rulings rather than follow past precedent. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on due process and the right to privacy. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response question mastery playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into topic three point ten. In this lesson, we will explore how social movements have used civil rights protections to advocate for their causes. First, we will look at how civil rights protections are written into the law. Then we'll look at how those protections have empowered major social movements seeking equality and justice. Let's start with civil rights protections. These are the legal ways people are protected from discrimination. These protections come from two key places in the Constitution: the due process clause and the equal protection clause. To quickly recap, the due process clause is found in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. It protects people from unfair treatment by the government by making sure laws are applied fairly and that basic rights are respected. The equal protection clause is found in the Fourteenth Amendment. It goes a step further by requiring the government to treat all people equally under the law and not create unfair differences between groups. Together, these two amendments say that the government must treat everyone fairly and cannot deny people their rights without a good reason. These rules apply to personal characteristics like race, national origin, and sex. Over time, Congress has also passed important laws like the Civil Rights Act. The Civil Rights Act makes it illegal to discriminate in areas such as employment, housing, and education. For example, it's illegal for an employer to refuse someone a job based on a person's gender, a landlord to refuse housing based on a person's religion, or a school to refuse education based on a person's race. Okay, let's move on to our discussion of social movements. Our key question for this part of the lesson is: How have social movements used legal protections in the Constitution and passed by Congress to achieve change in American society? We'll look at four examples: the Civil Rights Movement, the Women's Rights Movement, LGBTQ rights, and reproductive rights advocacy. First, let's look at the Civil Rights Movement. This was a movement in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties that pushed to end racial segregation and gain full rights for Black Americans. One major voice in the movement was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whose "Letter from a Birmingham Jail" explained why it was important to protest unjust laws. The movement used the equal protection clause to argue that the government could not treat people differently just because of their race. This movement led to new laws that restricted racial discrimination, especially in education and voting rights. Now let's look at the Women's Rights Movement, which used the same equal protection ideas to fight for gender equality. Groups like the National Organization for Women worked to end unfair treatment of women in jobs, education, and family life. They argued that if the law must treat people equally, then it could not allow different rules just because someone was a woman. Now let's look at the LGBTQ rights movement, which also drew on the equal protection clause to argue that people should not face discrimination because of who they love or how they identify. Activists pushed for equal treatment in areas like marriage, employment, and the military. For example, the majority opinion of the Supreme Court in Obergefell versus Hodges, a two thousand fifteen Supreme Court case, stated that denying same-sex couples the right to marriage violated the equal protection clause because it treated their relationships as less valid than those of opposite-sex couples. This led to the court mandated legalization of same-sex marriage. Finally, the reproductive rights debate shows how both sides use the equal protection clause to argue for their views. The pro-choice movement says laws limiting abortion deny women equal rights, which should be protected by the equal protection clause, by restricting women's control over their own bodies and futures. However, the pro-life movement argues that equal protection should begin at conception, giving unborn children the same legal rights as others. Here we can see that both sides claim to defend equality under the law, showing how the clause can motivate opposing movements. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the Constitution's promise of equal protection supports both individual rights and major social movements. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response question mastery playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into topic three point eleven. In the previous lesson, we looked at how social movements have put pressure on the government and courts to extend equal protection rights to groups based on race, national origin, and sex. In this lesson, we will explore how the US government has responded to those demands raised by social movements. First, we will look at how the Supreme Court has used its power to rule on important civil rights issues. Then, we'll explore major federal laws that were passed to address discrimination. Let's start with the role of the Supreme Court. The key Supreme Court ruling you need to know for this lesson in the AP course is Brown versus Board of Education, a nineteen fifty-four case that you might remember from previous lessons. Here, the court ruled that school segregation based on race violated the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause. This meant that public schools could no longer keep Black and white students in separate schools just because of their race. Court decisions like this showed that the Constitution could be used to challenge unfair treatment and force change in public policies. Okay, now let's move on to laws passed by Congress that were created in response to pressure from social movements calling for justice and equality. We'll look at three of the most important: the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, Title IX of nineteen seventy-two, and the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. Let's start with the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. I touched on this act in the previous lesson, but in the interest of following the AP course framework, let's dive in and go a bit deeper. The Civil Rights Act strengthened the constitutional principles of due process and equal protection, as well as the First Amendment's protection of religious freedom, by making it illegal to discriminate against people based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. It banned the physical separation of races, known as racial segregation, in public places like restaurants, movie theaters, and buses. It also made it clear that schools and other public facilities have to be racially integrated. Finally, it made it illegal for employers to discriminate in hiring, which helped people of all backgrounds have a fair shot at jobs. Next is Title IX of nineteen seventy-two, which focused on sex discrimination in education. This law said that schools and universities receiving federal money could not treat students differently based on their sex. One big result of Title IX was that schools had to give equal opportunities to boys and girls in sports and other activities. It helped make sure that girls and women had the same access to education and extracurricular programs as boys and men. Finally, we have the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, which was passed to stop states from making it harder for Black Americans to vote. In some states, officials had used tactics like literacy tests, poll taxes, which were fees that voters had to pay to cast a ballot, and even threats of violence to stop Black citizens from voting, while allowing most white citizens to vote freely without facing these hurdles. The Voting Rights Act banned these race-based barriers and gave the federal government power to step in and protect voting rights. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the US government has responded to social movements through court rulings and civil rights laws. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response question mastery playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into topic three point twelve. In this lesson, we will explore how the US legal system has tried to balance the rights of minority groups with the interests of the majority. First, we will look at moments in history when minority rights were restricted. Then we'll examine cases where the court stepped in to protect minority groups. And finally, we'll look at how the courts have sometimes sided with majority interests. Let's start with restricting minority rights. For this AP course, you need to be able to cite a landmark eighteen ninety-six Supreme Court case called Plessy versus Ferguson that restricted minority rights. In this case, the court established the idea of separate but equal. This idea said that African Americans were legally allowed to be segregated from white people in public places like schools, restaurants, and hotels as long as they were provided separate facilities that were equal to those of the white people, although in practice, the African-American facilities were often vastly inferior. This approach gave the majority population the power to create whites-only spaces and limited the opportunities and rights of minority groups. The separate but equal approach established in Plessy versus Ferguson was later challenged and reversed. For this AP course, you need to know that Brown versus Board of Education, which we discussed in the previous lesson, effectively ended Plessy versus Ferguson by ending racial segregation in public schools. This decision used the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to say that everyone deserves the same treatment under the law, no matter their race. Now let's look at a case where majority rights are protected. The example of majority rights protections you need to know for this AP course involves majority-minority districts. These are voting districts drawn to give racial or ethnic minorities a better chance to elect candidates of their choice. However, the court has ruled that race cannot be the predominant reason for drawing district lines, even if it's to support minority groups. In cases like Shaw versus Reno in nineteen ninety-three and Miller versus Johnson in nineteen ninety-five, the justices struck down districts they believed were created mainly to ensure minority representation, saying this violated the equal protection clause. In these instances, the court has upheld the rights of the majority by emphasizing that all voters should be treated equally and that everyone's vote should carry the same weight. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on how the government has tried to balance minority and majority rights. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. If you're following along with the study guide and free response question mastery playbook, check your answers for this section using the answer key before moving on. And when you're ready, we'll dive right into topic three point thirteen. In this lesson, we will explore how the Constitution and the Supreme Court have shaped the rules around affirmative action. First, we will look at what affirmative action actually is and why it was created. Then we'll examine how the Supreme Court has debated whether it fits within the rules of the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause. Let's start with the definition. Affirmative action is when organizations such as colleges take active steps to include groups that have been historically discriminated against and marginalized, such as racial minorities and women. For example, a university might consider race as one factor in admissions to increase diversity, or a company might aim to hire more workers from groups that have been unfairly excluded in the past. Okay, let's move on to how the Supreme Court has handled the issue of affirmative action and the Constitution. We'll break this down into two parts. First, we'll look at whether the equal protection clause supports affirmative action. Then we'll cover the Supreme Court's rulings. First, the equal protection clause. We've covered this clause extensively in this unit. It's the clause in the Fourteenth Amendment that says the government must give everyone equal protection of the laws. In simple terms, this means that the government has to treat people fairly and equally. The equal protection clause has been central to debates about affirmative action. Supporters argue that affirmative action helps fulfill the clause's promise by promoting fairness and correcting the effects of past discrimination. Opponents of affirmative action claim that giving preference based on race or gender violates the equal protection clause by treating people differently because of their group identity. Now let's look at key court rulings on affirmative action by exploring three key cases related to affirmative action in college admissions: Regents of the University of California versus Baca, Grutter versus Bollinger, and Students for Fair Admissions versus Harvard. In Regents of the University of California versus Baca, the court said that strict racial quotas were unconstitutional, but allowed race to be one factor among others in admissions. In Grutter versus Bollinger, the court upheld the University of Michigan Law School's affirmative action policy, saying that considering race as part of a holistic review could help create a diverse student body and was consistent with equal protection. But in Students for Fair Admissions versus Harvard, the court ruled that race-conscious admissions programs at Harvard and the University of North Carolina violated the equal protection clause because they treated applicants differently based on race. This effectively ended the policy of affirmative action in college admissions. These three rulings show how the court's view of fairness and equality in affirmative action has shifted over time with the shifting ideological makeup of the Supreme Court. Okay, that brings us to the end of our lesson on affirmative action. On the screen now are the key terms from this lesson. This also marks the end of Unit Three. You've now got all the key information you need from this unit, but you'll need to have the ability to apply it in the exam. So here's what you need to do next. Complete the study guide for this unit, which is linked in the description, and grab the free response question mastery playbook to test your ability to apply this information in an exam-like situation. And when you're ready, we'll dive straight into Unit Four.